Karen, Walt's having difficulty logging in, so give him a couple more minutes here.
Okay.
Okay, Karen, it looks like we have everybody now.
Okay, that's good news. It is 4:04 PM and I'm going to call the meeting of the Manzanita Planning Commission to order. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of our September 19, 2022 meeting. I'm going to ask the commissioners if everyone has been able to read and review the minutes? And if there are any additions, corrections, or otherwise wrongness. Hearing none, I consider a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bert. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. I want a note for the record that Lee Hildebrand is excused from our panel today. Audience participation with the members of the audience like to introduce themselves for the record. Scott, you want to unmute people?
Okay, first off will be Leila or Joe. Leila Salmon, go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself. She's unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to unmute Linda.
Hi, Linda Kessler, Manzanita resident.
Thank you. And Mark, you can unmute yourself now.
Okay, Mark Kessler, Manzina resident. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. And one more try for Leila. We can't hear you, so it's Leila Salmon or Joe. And that's all we have. You're muted, Karen.
Of course I am. Okay, all the preliminaries. My name is Karen Reddick-Hirka. I'm chair for the Manzanita Planning Commission and will be presiding over the continuation of a land use hearing today. Members of the planning commission are appointed by the city council and serve as volunteers. This is the time and place set for a public hearing in the matter of a design review application for the project submitted. This is for the west portion of the property at 220 Lanita on Tax Lot 4, Block 14, Manzanita Beach subdivision by Harder Holdings Coastal LLC. Did I get that right? We're looking at the right piece of property?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. This hearing is now open. The decision to approve or deny this request will be based on the design review standards listed in section 4.080, 4.090, and 4.137 through 4.156, and the standards for the commercial C1 zone in section 3.040 of ordinance 954. This specific criteria are summarized to the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note, in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to this request. Note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing of this case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. Each case, this case will proceed with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, those in favor of the request, and finally, those opposed to the application. Commission staff and participants may direct questions to those who testified. And finally, the applicant will be entitled to a rebuttal. Generally, the applicant is entitled to 20 minutes to make their presentation. All other speakers should try to limit your comments to three minutes. Please avoid repetition, and if someone has expressed your thoughts, please, it's perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. If you send a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments. They are already part of the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, participant, oh, well, this is our second hearing. The participant can ask, request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony, but it'll be up to the commission to determine if the hearing will be continued or if the record will be kept open for additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it'll be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case.
And I do not see any hands raised, Karen.
Okay, any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and continue and consider this case?
And again, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to ask the commissioners if there are any updates to the declarations of conflict of, conflict or bias, expertise contact, or site visits by any members of the commission. I'll start with you, Phil.
No change.
Bert?
No change.
John?
No change.
Steve?
No change.
Okay, and for my own part, no change other than that I have visited the site again. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of this commission to hear the matter by reason of actual or potential interest, conflict of interest or bias?
And I see no hands raised, Karen.
Okay. So now we're ready to proceed with the hearing on the project, which is a retail business and three-unit hotel on Lot 4, the West property. Would the applicant like to give an overview of the development?
Yeah, we would. I'm Bob Carbaugh, Scott Edwards Architecture. I'm joined with Eric Wenzel. And I'm actually going to have Brody and Dustin, who are the co-founders of Staple Jack Brewing Company, give short introductions of themselves and kind of provide us with a high-level walkthrough of the property and.
Excuse me, Bob, hate to interrupt, but I can barely hear you. Might have to adjust your microphone.
Okay. Is that better? So, sorry, it was better, right? Yeah, okay. Sorry, Walt was muted, so I could hear him. So my name is Bob Carbaugh. I presented with you guys last time on this project. I'm joined by Eric Wenzel. Also, it's Scott Edwards Architecture. We're both architects. And I also have Brody and Dustin, who are the co-founders of Staple Jack Brewing online. And I think they'll have them give introductions of who they are and their kind of relationship to Staple Jack, as well as have them do a really quick kind of high-level overview of what's being provided on site and kind of just the goals of the project, because I know that I want you guys to hear them too and not just me.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. I'll go ahead and kick it off. My name is Brody Dame, co-founder of Staple Jack Brewing Company. Dustin and I, we founded Staple Jack in 2019. We were college roommates many, many, it feels like multiple decades ago. And we always dreamed of opening a place that was community-oriented, that did things the right way with integrity, treated our team right, and created a world-class product. And so, as some of you may or may not know, but you know, we spent the better course of two years renovating and restoring a church that was built in 1909 in northeast Portland. And it's quickly become a community gathering spot. We're really, really proud of it. And then since then, we opened a pizza location on the border of Portland and Beaverton. And then finally, we recently opened our production facility in Hillsborough, Oregon, and we distribute in Oregon and Washington. We're really excited to join the Manzanita community. Dustin and I have thought a lot about not only experiential places that we can create around the state of Oregon, but how we can create those places with community focus. And so each of our places is intentional that it's a community gathering spot. And so that's the spirit with which we approach the Manzanita community with our projects as well. So we're both, Dustin and I are both parents of younger children. And so we're really excited about the opportunity to build a place that's family-friendly and welcoming. And as we covered the project last time, I don't know, Bob, if you want me to give an overview again, or, but that's kind of the ethos and what we're trying to do with the location, so. So Dustin, do you want to introduce yourself if you can hear it?
Yeah, sorry, I'm operating off my phone. Like Brody said, we've opened up our brewery in Portland and a few other places. I have a house in Manzanita, and I think Manzanita is the best town on the coast. And really, we wanted to add to the community. So we spent the last year trying to design a really cool building that we think will add to it. So.
Thanks, Dustin. Thanks, Brody. So the project, as mentioned, is a three-unit hotel. I think that there are some items from the last presentation that we, in coming away from that and reviewing together as a team, we felt like there were a couple items that potentially got off on the wrong foot. So we produced a narrative to kind of clarify the, a few of those items that we understood to be a bit maybe less focused or a bit more causing confusion in the meeting last time. And one of those in particular was directly related to, and I'm sorry, please interrupt me. If you'd like me to run through the whole program again, I'll just start speaking to the narrative. But for the sake of time, would Karen or anyone else on the commission, would you like me to run through the project kind of holistically from start to finish?
I'll leave that to the commission. On my part, I think I got it, what you're trying to do. I'd like to hear how you're addressing the differences.
Okay.
We had, anybody object to that?
Okay, great, I'll proceed then. So I know that there was, there was some confusion. We had a plan that said Airbnb on the, in civil drawings, which we didn't catch and didn't realize is in there, and that's not an Airbnb, it's a hotel, which is allowed outright in the C1 zoning. It's not intended to be used for dwelling. It's not, there's no plan to do that. These are not condominiums that have different requirements and different oversight with the city of Manzanita, taxing and all that. This is a hotel. It is a small boutique hotel. The narrative itself goes through and outlines a couple of different ways that the management is structured. And operationally, the housekeeping would be addressed and all of that. I can share my screen. We can talk about a couple of those, just to make sure that I run them line by line. Oh, I can't show my screen, so that's okay. I guess I don't need to. The, the.
I'll allow you to share your screen. Sorry about that.
Oh, it's fine.
She's not even going to let me. I guess you're not going to be able to. Hold on here. Now see if you can.
It seems to be working. So the, going through this, I know, again, we mentioned the Airbnb item, and it's a hotel. It's not an Airbnb. It's not a short-term rental. It's a hotel. It has, it's a small complex of three units. There's two, two units, one, two bedroom unit. These are provided with lock boxes for means of access, and booking is primarily done online. So there are no onsite reservations that might necessitate an in-person manager, so to speak. The laundry facilities and the way that the building and the program is meant to operate is that there's housekeeping comes in between different stays to take care of the units and bring them up. The, we talked about the trash last time as well. I think that one of the other things, the notes that I saw in the, in the packet and from the staff report, it did mention the term mixed use as it applies to like entailing both residential and commercial development. I do want to clarify that from the architect standpoint, as we review and talk about anything that's mixed use, it really means two separate uses, and it's not specific to residential and commercial. It's from a code standpoint, when we talk about occupancies and buildings and like the way that allowable areas are calculated, say, for instance, all of that relates to a mixed-use occupancy, whether it's storage and it's business or if it's retail and it's a hotel. That in itself is the distinction that we intended from calling it mixed use in our first approach, the first narrative and first draft of the documents. The hotel parking requirements, we noted that the spaces required for the code for 4.090 and the Manzanita zoning ordinance 95-4 mentions that one space for each 400 square feet of units or less. And one, of course, spaces of units for all the units and rounds to the nearest whole number based on what, based on the, yeah, nearest whole number. And from that, there is this comment in here, and this is a clip straight from the code that just says, and two units for a manager's unit. It's not necessarily requiring that there is a manager unit or going into that. And the, when you will consider a three-unit, sorry, three-unit hotel that is having two spaces for a manager's unit and three spaces for an actual, the actual units that are on site, it's a little bit disproportionate in terms of the amount that's being, that would be required if you were to interpret it as being just for a manager blanket. I would like to point out too, just that this is on the main stretch of Lanita. There's hotels on the street already. Just a point I know that we talked about, the precedent, the last one of the 34-unit hotel was by the golf course. And then there was onsite parking for a manager at that one. The staff report does mention that there's a difference in scale between those projects. We, I think that there is, you know, there's also precedent on Lanita in terms of having, like the Coast cabins, for instance, is a six-unit hotel that has only seven units of parking, or seven places of parking. So that's another precedent also to drop and look at that has a standard in the community that there are other hotels in operation that don't have manager units and never even a larger size. I think the, the hotel, we did mention that we understand that there is this need for parking. There's need for, you know, employee parking or something else too, even though it may not be required. We're looking at that there is bicycle parking that we could provide in the back. We could dedicate some space for it to have covered bicycle parking, similar to what you would see in a larger jurisdiction where bicycle parking would be required, such as Portland. Having a minimum of two spaces back there, that would be for employee parking for bikes, would help to alleviate some of that strain and allow a bit more of that flow, the flexibility for people who are coming into work to stay there and have their bikes stored safely. And then I think the other clarifications that were on here were things that we also covered in the E-Slot discussion. And I know that, you know, that's pretty clear from the drawings and from the presentations that these are intended to be an ensemble of buildings between the West lot and the East lot. And so the vertical red cedar siding between the both of them is clear sealed and maintained per manufacturer's instructions. The stained glass panel designs, we had a chance to talk to the owner about that a little bit more and confirm that the design direction. It's more decorative in terms of just having a traditional look to it with geometric patterns. And there's, this is, you know, we're looking at the old church that Staple Jack, Brody and Dustin already renovated and kind of pulling some of the imagery from that in terms of the shapes. And it's pretty, it's pretty simple in terms of the types of stained glass that we're looking at. And then we did note the signage placement on the drawings, which I wanted to mention briefly. Brody, Dustin, Eric, anything to add before we close up this section? I think we can turn back over to you.
Okay. Walt, would you do your report, please, or walk us through?
Here we go. Help you unmute. Good evening, everyone. This is the report for the commercial hotel retail space. Again, I think we're familiar with the location. Please note, this is a continuation. Unless there is any objection, I'd just like to summarize most of the material and simply focus on those, focus my comments on the additional material that was submitted. Property is located at 220 Lanita, currently zoned C1. The applicant, as you know, is requesting approval for the construction of a three-unit hotel in a commercial business that will front along Lanita. Subsequent to the September hearing, the applicant submitted additional material. He noted that the vertical red siding would be clear sealed and maintained. He just reviewed the stained glass panels with the commission. Also identified the location of the signage on the northwest corner of the building. This will be illuminated by a single sort of top-down light, very much commercial in style and also consistent with the other lighting. Additional information was also submitted with regard to the hotel operations. Again, this is a keyless entry. Manager will be off-site. Laundry facilities are at the site, and trash facilities will be removed as needed, and housekeeping will be provided as needed. Also, again, there was some confusion with the original site plans with regard to hotel, Airbnb, that sort of thing. As the applicant noted, all that was corrected. That information was submitted to the planning commission. With regard to the design review itself, I will simply note that the application meets the requirements for height setback, landscaping, floor area ratio. Also, they submitted the necessary stormwater improvements along with calculations. The only major change from last month's comment is that we now have a location for the sign to be 24 square feet in area, and then specifics will be provided when they make the application. The next item for consideration is parking. As I reviewed last month, I concluded the site required five parking spaces. The applicant came back with commentary suggesting that only three is required, noting that there is no onsite manager. I think this is one for the planning commission to make a decision on. My concern is that unless there is some designated parking for this particular project, even if it's off-site, you know, two or three blocks away, if the manager has to get there, there needs to be a designated space to park instead of looking around for parking through the downtown area. Also note that this was not the issue. The planning commission also incorporated the manager's parking requirement for the previous hotel application that was to be operated in the same venue. However, we're only looking at three units here, and possibly having the three parking spaces may be sufficient for the type of use. But I'm leaving that up to the planning commission. I think we can go both ways. My recommendation, though, is for the five spaces with provisions for two off-site. This whole process, by the way, with regard to the design review, we are following the process consistent with the code in development. When it comes to the design review itself, just simply note that the building meets all the setbacks, height restrictions, and other requirements. We previously noted that there is, the setbacks are met. There is no. That there is uh, the setbacks are met, there is no um. There's no unique features on the site that needs to be incorporated with this particular design. Uh, let's see. Uh, the commercial aspect of it, that is the retail aspect, fronts along the street with the interaction uh with the street. All the storage related to the uh facility will be in the back away from public view. And again, all the information was provided on stern range. Um, with regard to the uh criteria for the architectural uh portion of it. Um, again, this building is similar to the one that was approved. By the planning commission last month, located to the east. Again, I think we concluded that was a unique design. It certainly, I think, uh, would add something to the downtown. Uh, the applicant fully intends to use native plants as part of their landscaping. And can you hold on for a second? I got a barking dog. Hold on, please. I love my watchdog, but sometimes. Karen, you thought you had it bad. Um. Again, um, let's see, all the information was provided on the storm drainage. Um, the lighting is very commercial in nature. There's no industrial big spotlights uh on it and. Also, I think overall the buildings have met with the intent of the code. Certainly, this is not a large structure, large monolith. Uh, creative use of wood, metal and glass. I think it's certainly be attractive to the downtown. Uh, finally, staff noted that uh there this is a three unit hotel is involved, and we're certainly recommending. That the applicant comply with provisions in state law as well as county law with regard to operations. I think the design review can comply, uh excuse me, the application can comply. With the design review requirements, and if approved by the commission, staff recommends inclusion of the conditions noted in the staff report. And again, my apologies for Luna.
Okay, um, let me find my notes here. Make sure we get everything done. Um, uh, do the commissioners have any questions for either applicant or staff? Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Um, did you have a question, Phil?
Uh, a couple, but maybe you let Steve go first.
Okay, go first, Steve.
Okay, uh. The laundry facility, so I hear you correctly, you say that the cleaning people do the laundry onsite and. And all the trash will be stored onsite after they do their cleaning?
Um, I, yeah, so there is a laundry facility onsite or there's a washer and dryer on the lower level of the unit. Um, oh, sorry, of the of the facility um there and there is trash onsite as well. Um. I think beyond that.
Go ahead.
So, oh, just, I mean, beyond that, like Brody and Dustin can speak to operational. Um, specifics beyond what's what's provided.
Okay.
Yeah, we we will keep. Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just going to add that uh it's going to be uh self-contained. There will there'll be a vacuum that'll be onsite. Uh, there'll be cleaning supplies that will be uh onsite in a secure location. So. The cleaning staff, they're not bringing stuff into the site. They're not taking stuff out of the site. Uh, I mean, they could ride their bike or walk. Um, but when they're servicing the site, they don't actually need to bring anything into the units.
So the uh the trash pickup, we talked about this last week for the other facility about the. How is it going to be brought out to the street? Are they going to drive down to pick up the trash down uh in the parking? How is the trash going to be destroyed or picked up?
Yeah, so my, oh, sorry, Bob.
Oh, no, it's it's fine. I mean, you can, uh, I'll let you speak. I did talk to the the trash company about this specifically about bringing things up to the street and they they do have arrangements in place for the. They will come into the into the site to to pull it out, um, but not necessarily having to bring their vehicle down the driveway. So there I talked to them about developing that arrangement between Steeplejack or or Brody and Dustin and with that um with them.
So the trash will be picked up on the street, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct.
All right. Now, your offsite manager, I I have to admit that this keyless entry kind of has me very interested because. Um, you know. Setting a precedent of keyless entries, hotel motels, manzanita. Rubbed raw against short-term rentals. So uh, I think you're aware that we talked about this last month and. Um, I understand the state allows it, but uh I'm just really concerned about. A lot of keyless entry hotels in Manzanita. So your offsite manager, uh. You say it's going to be local and uh. Do you have anybody selected for this? Anybody? Make sure that you're going to have someone available short quickly.
Um, I'll go ahead and answer. And we haven't selected a manager uh yet at this time, but our intention is to uh have someone local and uh that is able to respond to. Uh, to any situations or or needs of our, you know, of our guests uh very quickly. So that's that's the intention.
Um, I like to remind the commissioners that as much, you know, these are all interesting things, but really, um. We can't base a decision on operational manner matters, except as they apply to. How the site is used. So I just want to remind you that I I I'm fascinated too by all the changes in the in the world. How things are done. Um, did that answer all your questions, Steve?
I got a couple. I got a couple more, Karen.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah, I understand that, Karen. I just wanted to voice that I'm concerned about this.
I got it.
Uh, we talked about the uh side of line when your people drive up the driveway to enter the street. Uh. We really did not settle that with the other with the restaurant, but since the the hotel is going to be used in the parking. And to make sure that the light assigned for people exiting is clear. I'm not sure what the elevation rises from the base parking lot to the street. But there would be a clear vision for vehicles leaving.
Yes, um, there there would be on the um. So on on the plan as well, on the the hotel side, we have like glass guardrails, as we mentioned on on the previous call. Um, on kind of both sides from the restaurant, like that patio area and also downward the um. Uh, the, I guess, the northwest corner of the driveway as you're going up, that will also have glass guardrail. So there will be vision kind of to look back and forth. Um, we can look at the sightlines too as we develop the the civil plans and um to try to. See if there's any kind of stepping back that we can do or um put a focal point in terms of. Making sure that visibility is clear um as much as we can to um through the street, but um. Does that answer your question?
Well, I know you can't control who's parking on the street, but you know, large vans parked there and it's a very limited vision. Visibility leaving that area, so. That's a concern that I have, and I don't know how that's going to be resolved, but uh it's very busy in Lenida in the summertime. And I asked that last meeting about the liquor sales or wine or beer being sold in your um. Uh, arcade area down there and food. And I think you said you may be be serving alcohol.
Uh, Bob, yeah, I can answer that. You're you're talking about selling in inside the arcade?
That's correct.
Yes, we we intend to sell um beer to go in both uh a beer a beer and uh. Uh, but no, no, no liquor plan for uh at this time.
Well, uh, you said you're going to keep it family oriented, so if you start selling hard. Eleven effect on being family oriented and for the community and for you, the guest estate.
Sorry, we broke up just a little bit there, but but no, I was saying that that we have no intention of selling uh hard alcohol or liquor in the arcade. You know, we we don't have any intention of selling it there.
Okay. Uh, Karen, could that be one of the conditions of approval that they would not be able to later date uh apply for a liquor license?
I'm not sure that we can say that because as long as they meet the requirements for. Uh, selling liquor, um. You know, they have they have areas, I don't think we can, we can make that a condition.
I see Lila shaking her head. I I guess I'm concerned about there being a family oriented business and and the visitors are Manzanita. And if you start selling hard liquor, you restrict it to adults. Is that correct?
Uh, no, that, I mean, I just want to reiterate it, and maybe it's my microphone, but we we don't have any plans of selling hard hard alcohol or or liquor in the arcade operation. Um, we're OLCC licensing requirements. Uh, we we allow uh minors and uh at at all hours. The only restriction that even even in our operations that do sell liquor and cocktails and so forth, uh, it it's uh the only requirement is that they that minors can't sit at the bar. But uh, but everywhere else, it's it's fully permitted. Um, and if. You, you know, have the opportunity to go to any of our locations, you'll see that not only they're family friendly, but they're um, it's it's just the environment that we're looking for as far as fostering community.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Uh, right now, Karen, that's all I have.
Okay, um, Phil, you had your hand up. Are you ready?
Uh, I am. Um, I believe uh the the last being, I think it was Bob, it could be an error, but she told me, I think that the. Occupancy for the rooftop uh seating area was fifty occupants. Is that correct?
Forty nine or less.
Forty nine. Okay, can you tell me what the occupancy rating would be for the downstairs unit uh level?
That would also be forty nine or less.
Uh, it's less square footage and you've got the eating area down there. I was just curious as to uh. What the total occupancy for the structure would be, both inside and outside.
Uh, it's it's about a hundred. I mean, I guess it's it's ninety eight. You have forty nine, forty nine.
Okay. Perhaps uh one of the owners uh could address this, um. Do you have any idea of the hours of the operation or the days of the operation? We have uh. Some folks uh in the area who are concerned about uh. An overabundance of customers at your establishment.
Uh, we we have not, I um, I I'd love to hear the concerns from others in the the community. I haven't haven't heard any of those concerns yet, but um. That would help us, you know, kind of craft our hours, but we haven't set ours yet. What I would say is that uh. You you know, we we are determined to be great neighbors and, you know, at our Broadway location, for instance, there's a there's a large apartment complex behind the building and and all the other bars and areas, you know. Uh, restaurants in the areas are open until two AM. We voluntarily close at ten PM there uh to be good neighbors to the apartment complex. So. Um, I I would say that, you know, the intent of the space is is family oriented. I I, you know, it's not going to be. You know, uh, open till two AM or anything like that. It's a, you know, uh, not not that we would anyway, but but I would foresee something in the neighborhood of like an eleven to eight type thing, but we haven't set those 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 times yet.
Okay, um, how are you going to handle a parking space for, say, a repairman that would have to come to the site to uh. Do some repairs with regards to your uh your rental units?
I think it would be a coordination with the offsite manager uh to to come and and either um, you know, block off a uh, you know, either maybe we don't rent uh one of the the um. The hotel units uh when we know that there's there's maintenance so that uh we ensure that there's there's a parking spot um onsite. Usually. My experience in the restaurant industry generally, you know, maintenance. And uh, repair technicians like to be parked close because it's heavy tools and and a lot of lugging anyway, so it's it's. It's to their benefit and ours to uh and also, as you're paying by the hour, you know, often you don't you want to. Waste as little time as possible. So I I think it would just be a coordination of maybe not renting one of the units so that you ensure that there's a space available.
Okay. Uh, what about deliveries of, say, uh. Of uh. Beer or uh foodstuffs, et cetera. Is there going to be an accommodation for you? For a curbside delivery of Lenida is really busy during the day.
Yeah, so um, the grocery store across the street, for instance, gets deliveries from Provista Grocers, which is our primary supplier as well. And so uh, when I was there. Uh, two weeks ago, I was talking with Provista driver and, you know, they they come early um and and they actually do a a street unload. Uh, for them, and then they use a motorized or electric pallet jack to to then deliver the the goods. Um, but those those deliveries are always coordinated in the in the off hours, you know, uh, generally in the. The early morning, um, I think that uh the seven AM timeframe is when they deliver today to the grocery store. So. We would try to time it uh with that same delivery. In fact, the meat delivery at that grocery store is is our meat purveyor too, uh, Corfini Meats. And so, um. The great news about this is that, but you know, both these vendors, um, uh, you know, are are not only used to operating in Manzanita, but but they're there multiple times uh every week. So. Um, so we anticipate, we don't anticipate an issue there.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, uh, John, do you have any questions?
Excuse me, no, not at this time.
Okay, how about you, Bert?
Um, I don't have any questions. Uh, I'm con- I would like to say I'm concerned about the uh. Parking requirements and uh. Uh, we perhaps should discuss that a little bit later.
Let me see what my questions are. I've got a couple written down. Um, my first question, I guess, is, um, I wanted to. Understand the ownership. I you introduced yourselves as the co-owners or co-founders of Steeplejack Brewing. Um, uh, but Harder Holdings Coastal Inc. or LLC, that's a separate partnership. Is that correct? And that you are the partners of, that we're speaking to actual owners of the project?
This is Dustin. Uh, my holding company owns the real estate and then we lease it out to the to the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. Um, I uh trash dumpster is also, I I don't mean to harp on this, but um, it looks like the place you've located your trash dumpster is behind a parking space. And I'm curious how that dumpster is going to get hauled out to the street if you've got a tenant parked uh in that middle space. Is there room to to actually haul a dumpster out?
Um, yeah, so there would be, there there is an accessible kind of clear area that's required for that parking spot. So you you could have, and it would have a. Like, we would put in a curb cut, even though the curb cut wouldn't be needed for having that there, and then the trash could be pulled out um down and up. If that makes sense.
Is that you're, is that what you're intending to do? And is is that? On the plans that you submitted, is that um, there is enough space? So are you talking about moving the dumpster through the um, the accessible van space?
Um, not through the space, but for the clear area. So we're not.
Right, okay, okay, got it.
It's not not, will would not impede or be obstructed by any vehicles at any time.
Okay, thank you. Um, you have no no signage for the hotel?
Um, at this time, nothing is presented. We have twenty four square feet maximum area that we can use for the property. Um, and we've noted that where we plan on having a sign, which could be a joint sign for both um the property for the hotel and for the arcade. Um, at this time, you know, that's kind of the intent until we get further along down the road. We're. Identifying the rails and we'll submit a full signage permit package at the time that we we have it developed fully.
Okay, so I think I mentioned last time, part of design review is looking at, you know, your actual intentions, where things are going to be. So I would expect that they would be. Located in the spot you designated on the plan. Uh, going forward, um, I just want to confirm there's no ADA parking required. Uh, going forward, um, I just want to confirm there's no ADA parking required for the retail area or the restaurant. Is that correct, Walt?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Um, and that's the end of my questions. So, uh, are there any persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development? If you could raise your hand?
I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Uh, any comments from the public in opposition to this development?
And still no hands raised, Karen.
Okay. I note that there was a letter, um, or an email in the packet. Is that the only, um, mail that we've received regarding this development, Scott?
That, that's the only comment that I received.
Okay. Thank you. Um, before we close the, uh, public testimony, I'd just like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to any of the points that we've raised. If there's anything more you'd like to say before we sort our deliberations.
Brody, Dustin, Eric, I, I don't think I have anything specific.
Okay.
No, nothing for me.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this discussion now, and we'll invite, um, discussion by the commission. Commission members may ask questions of the applicant or staff, but we're now to the point where discussion is limited primarily to the commission members. So I think Bert, you mentioned that you wanted to talk about parking later. Would you like to talk about that now? Was it parking that you mentioned?
Yes. It seems to me that the, uh, that a a more typical hotel in Manzanita perhaps would have an onsite management, uh, available. And they would have parking spaces, space or spaces for that onsite manager. And that onsite manager would be there to respond to things that, uh, that are of interest or of concern to the public perhaps about what is going on at the hotel. And also for, uh, access by the residents, the guests at the hotel. If there is something that comes up that they, where they need something, some help immediately regarding the operation of the building, water, electricity, whatever. So that there has, should be, uh, someplace for those needs to be satisfied. Now, the applicant has said that they would have an offsite manager. And, uh, that, that's seems kind of vague right now as to how either the, the guests at the hotel or more particularly people who aren't guests at the hotel, who need to report something that they feel is important regarding the operation of the hotel at that particular time. Uh, and at this, at this time, there is no, uh, we can't say that yes, there is a place that they can go to get their concerns and questions answered. Uh, the offsite manage it, offsite management is kind of a vague concept, not knowing what the, the owner considers to be local, whether it's in Manzanita or in Nahalem or even in, in Wheeler. Um, and the, where the response times can be very long. Uh, and if there's, as, uh, was pointed out earlier, if there's no place for the, uh, offsite manager to park, if he, he or she is driving to the hotel from a place that's remote. Um, how that, how they're going to satisfy, how they're going to fulfill their function as a manager and someone to call or to be available for emergency situations. So, um, I think that the city has, uh, the zoning ordinance has required parking for that purpose for the manager to be either available for the manager to park or as a parking place for his, his auto when he is or she is onsite on a permanent, more or less permanent basis. So I'm concerned about this and, uh, I'm not sure what the, uh, solutions are. I guess, uh, it may or may not be a planning commission issue. Um, if we, uh, pass on a design that does not satisfy the operation of the, the proper operation of the hotel, I feel that we would be, uh, neglecting that, that issue. So, um, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments on this. There's some, some things we might do, but I'd like to hear other people's comments, other com- commission members.
Anybody want to jump in? Go ahead, John.
Uh, yeah, I've got the same concerns, uh, that, uh, that Bert does. Uh, I like to point out that we've got two separate buildings and two separate lots. And per the zoning code, uh, as long as they're, uh, retail or restaurant, they don't need parking spaces. But of course, what prompted this is the motel. Uh, I think at the last meeting, uh, a discussion took place about how many employees would be in the restaurant. And the estimate was, uh, ten to thirty people. And of course, if you get to thirty people, that's going to be in the summertime. Uh, those people are, uh, are not going to all ride bikes, uh, into Manzanita. No, you're going to have a tough time finding, uh, people to work, uh, at that location, especially those numbers. We're having that, that problem all up and down the coast, of course. But I think you're going to find most of your people come in from out of town. And they're going to need parking. And of course, they're going to park on the street. Uh, the zoning code doesn't require that you supply those people with parking. Uh, however, given that the motel is only three spaces and realistically three spaces would be enough. I think it would be in everybody's interest to keep the additional two spaces, uh, for other people. Uh, for instance, the manager of the restaurant, uh, the manager of our arcade or don't have a place to park. And I'm, I'm sure they would appreciate it. Uh, but my point is those additional two spaces required for the managers', uh, activity can put to good, be good, excuse me, can be put to good use. So I, I really think it would behoove us to, uh, to keep that provision in place and not, not to alter it for this, this project.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Steve.
Concur with, uh, um, it's, uh, very well put and I concur with.
I'm sorry. You're frozen on my screen, Steve. Did anyone else hear what he had to say?
Uh, I, I, I concur with what Bert said and John had reiterated that, uh, the two parking places, uh, even though legalistically may not be required, they speak very necessary.
Okay. I, I got most, I think I got all of that. Bill, did you have any comments? On this or anything else?
I echo what Bert and John and Steve are saying.
My video again. Okay. There we go. Um, I want to say first of all, that I really appreciate the, all the thought that went into, um, the design of this building and the way it's, um, coordinated with the building that you're going to do next door. I think it's going to be a good addition, um, to the city. I like the idea of the outdoor living space that you've provided, um, in this. And I really appreciate the idea of the covered bicycle parking for your employees. I, I, I would like to see that as a condition, um, of this to pro- provide at least a couple of spaces. If, if we're going to pass on the additional parking spaces. Um, and from my perspective, I, I really don't think we should, um, give a pass on the two, two spaces. It seems to me that every time we've, um, we've allowed a development to squeeze every last little bit, um, and the parking is kind of an afterthought in a lot of cases. We've run into some problems with some other projects that we've, um, that we've done this way. And I don't want us to continue that habit of, um, minimizing the need for parking spaces. Um, so that's, that's where I am on that. Um, everything else, I feel pretty confident that you've handled pretty well, that, um, all the other things that we've been concerned with, um, have been addressed, but I, I, I feel like you just didn't really even address the parking other than to provide bicycle spaces, which I think is a great idea. Uh, go ahead, Walt. You have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um, my concern with placing a condition for them to install the buis- bicycle parking is they don't own the property. In other words, we're making a decision on the west lot that's going to impact the east lot. Now, if the east lot showed the bicycle parking there as part of their application, it'd be a lot easier. We could have taken care of that with the prior hearing. If the applicant wishes to install it, uh, there is no problem with that. That is perfectly acceptable. Just that I'm a little nervous about placing, conditioning this decision with regard to impacting an adjacent property. They don't, although there's some ownership here, there, these are two separate developments. And I would just urge you to consider that. Um, I think the applicant, though, saying that is sincere about building it. And I think based on this hearing, certainly understands the impact, uh, of parking as well as the benefit for providing bicycle parking. Just a thought.
I, thank you. I didn't realize that that's where the parking spaces were going to go. I understood they would be part of this development. So I, I, I thank you all for clarifying that. I appreciate it. Uh, anybody else got any concerns, questions? Comments? Um, I would certainly entertain a motion at this point, if you've made up your minds about, uh, this application as a whole. Oh. Um, okay. I see Bob's hand is up, but Walt is your hand up also still?
Well, I just wanted you to know that condition C does require the two off-street parking spaces. I know that was part of the discussion, but just let you know that condition is already in there.
Um, can you? Okay. Condition C.
C. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Um, Bob, you had a commenter.
Oh yeah. Just before the motion, um, do we have a chance to rebuttal? I, um, could you remind me?
Um, certainly.
Okay. Well, I'll, um, just to start really quickly, I know there were a couple of comments raised about, you know, response times or, you know, how local just exactly is the manager going to be? Um, I think those are operational questions. And I, I don't think that that is necessarily the, under, you know, the, the criteria of approval from like the designer review standpoint. Um, I just want to point out that there, there will be more details that, that are developed as the ownership starts to move forward and, and find that person. But, um, you know, when we're still, we're not under construction yet either, then we, we, we still have to find those people. Um, so I, I think that we, uh, I just want to make that mention that, um, I don't think that that should be, have a bearing on the, um, approval criteria.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think, um, one more thing to just, um, you know, there's, um, in terms of just the, the, the requirement and the, the, the number of spaces and all of that, I think that, um, you know, we, we talked about potentially, there was mentioned by, I think, John or Steve and a couple others in terms of like managers for the restaurant or arcade being, having a parking space as well. Um, you know, it, it's very difficult from a designer standpoint to go through this process and balance all the needs of the site, um, effectively. And we do use the zoning code as the tool that we are referencing for all of our design decisions. And we have pre-application meetings at the city where we review what we're proposing. Um, and it's, it's very difficult. It becomes very difficult when those things that we believe to be held true or, um, you know, the, the, the approval criteria of that base is based on certain things in there, um, in terms of like partner runs, for instance, in this case, like it's very, very difficult for designers to work within that when it changes on you. Um, I just wanted to mention that before we close.
Thank you. Okay. That's on the record. Uh, Walt, would you, would you walk us through, um, your recommendations?
Sure.
Section, section four. Let's just, um, I'm going to ask the commission whether or not we agree with each of those recommendations.
Okay. Uh, I'm about midway through page twelve. Uh, recommendation and conditions of approval. It'd be item A, developer will submit engineering plans to the city, uh, addressing water, stormwater, street improvements and similar facilities. Uh, sanitary sewer plants need to go to Nahalem Bay, uh, wastewater. These plants have to be approved, reviewed and approved prior to construction. Uh, the second item is item B, uh, applicant will then submit building plans.
Walt, sorry, excuse me. Let me, um, let me just interrupt you there and ask the commissioners whether you're in agreement with this first recommendation. I agree.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Karen? Karen?
Yep.
Uh, is it also going to the fire department as well?
The fire department reviews it as part of the building permit process, which is under B.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, condition B, developer will submit a building permit, uh, for the building, uh, must conform to applicable building codes and shall comply with the following. Item one, submitted site plan will conform to the approved layout. In other words, they submitted a design, they have to follow through with that. Two building plans will include evidence ensuring the cedar exterior shall be finished with a durable seal and continually maintained. Plan shall include provisions for a s- single sign located as indicated by the applicant on plan sheet A three oh one A. Sign shall conform to code provisions, intercode, and sign illumination shall be limited to a single overhead light of a design similar to the proposed exterior lights. And finally, four, while building plans may be submitted simultaneously with engineering plans, building permits cannot be issued until engineering plans are approved.
Okay. Any agreement or disagreement with that condition B? I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Did I hear from everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Condition C, uh, prior to receiving a building permit, applicant will submit evidence of, you know, jumped ahead, uh, of access and parking, uh, agreement, including the adjacent property to the east. the adjacent property to the east. In addition, the developer will provide evidence of two additional off-site parking spaces in compliance with their code.
I agree.
I agree.
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 Okay.
I have a I have a question on that one.
Okay.
Do they need to be off-site?
Well, two of them will be off-site in terms of off of the project area. So in other words, they already have three within agreement with the lot to the the east lot. Now they need to provide two additional spaces elsewhere.
Okay. They would not have an option of providing those two spaces on that on the property.
I don't think they have room for those two spaces.
Okay.
Is it required to be within five hundred feet?
Right, they have to, they have to comply with the exact provision. They have to show evidence of those two spaces.
Within five hundred feet?
I believe that is the requirement.
Okay.
Okay, whatever it is, if it's three hundred, five hundred, they have to comply with that provision.
Okay, it's five hundred feet.
It is five hundred.
It is, yeah. Walt, if they were to alter the building footprint to put those additional two spaces on the lot, would that require another design review hearing?
Yes, that goes with condition F.
Okay.
Okay, did did we get condition C? Was there an objection there?
I have, I have agreed.
Okay. Everyone else is agreed? Did I hear you, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go, keep going.
Okay, condition D, item one. Prior to commencing development, developer shall submit evidence that their proposed hotel and its operations meet the definition of a hotel as defined by ORF six ninety-nine dot zero zero five. And prior to commencing, item two, prior to commencing development, the developer shall submit evidence from Tillma County that their proposed hotel complies and will continually comply with county regulations regarding the established, excuse me, establishment and operation of a hotel motel.
Any questions on that?
I agree.
Okay, I agree also. Okay.
Okay, under condition E, prior to occupancy, the developer shall complete the following. Install or extend facility improvements consistent with city and Nahalem Bay approved engineering plans. And B, or two, E two, install parking improvements consistent with approved building and engineering plans. Understand those parking improvements will be on the adjacent property, but you can't operate the hotel unless you have the parking there. So that's the reason for that.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
And F, the structure shall comply with building permit requirements informed to the submitted site plan. The applicant is advised that modification to the approved plan may require a new design review, application and decision.
I agree.
I agree. I agree.
I agree.
Oh, sorry.
I just wondered, did I miss anybody there? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, G, unless otherwise specifically conditioned by this decision, the building and improvements shall comply with applicable provisions in ordinance ninety-five dash four.
That makes sense to me.
That's kind of a boilerplate.
It does.
Agreed.
I agree.
I agree.
Finally, age, compliance with these conditions, the requirements, the Manzanita zoning ordinance, Nahalem Bay wastewater agency, Nahalem Bay Fire and Rescue, Tillma County Environmental Health and applicable building code provisions shall be the sole responsibility of the developer. Basically, this is our boilerplate to say they're responsible to follow up with requirements that we presented them.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay. That said, I think now we're ready for a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve the application and adopting adopted findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. And the vote is unanimous. We'll approve the application adopting the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. So, thank you very much for your time today.
And I'll have the order available probably tomorrow or Wednesday, okay?
Yep, I'm here all week.
Okay, real good.
Okay. Before we end our meeting today, do we have any general updates, Scott or Leila?
Yes, Karen, next month, we're going to be looking at phase five for the Platts for each slot. And then Leila and I are working with Tillma County. They've applied for a building permit to do some work up there, a Z wall, couple of covered sections. And during my review, I found that they needed to come back before the planning commission because their previous approval through Cardam had expired. So we're working to correct that, bring it to you next month. And we're going to, hopefully, we'll get everything completed in time.
Okay, so phase five of the Highlands and then is it a design review or what what are we looking at for that?
Well, clarify, I think it is a planned development or a design review.
Conditional use that incorporates the planned development process due to the zoning.
I knew you'd back me up on that one, Walt. Thanks.
And that's at the transfer station.
Correct.
Okay. Busy week for you guys.
Busy couple of weeks.
Yep. All right, unless there's anything else, I hear a motion to adjourn.
I got a couple of questions real quick for Scott. If I can. Scott, what is the current status with the Bernard project?
It's done. He he is not doing any further work on that project. He is selling what is built as a mixed-use structure, and he is going to sell off the second lot.
Okay, and then that large area there on third that's been cleared for development. Have you gotten anything potentially on that?
Nothing submitted for that yet.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Shall we adjourn? Somebody has to say it.
I'll make the motion.
All right. We adjour, we are adjourned. Thank you, John. Bye, everybody.
Goodbye.